Pledge of Allegiance.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Alright, and so tonight we're to begin with public comments. Any public comments from the Board this evening?
I do have a public comment. I wanted to talk about some Facebook posts. On one of the, it says Lunenburg, and it kind of looks like a Town of Lunenburg Facebook page. And every year this page, and it is attached to the Town of Lunenburg website, it has a link right there, so it looks like it's an actual Town of Lunenburg Facebook page. But every year they take a poll on what Lunenburg residents want to see in the New Year's Resolution for Lunenburg. This year, people complained about the garbage, the trash again, the tax bills, they did complain about tax bills going up, and there was something else. But apparently, they think that somebody from the town is writing it, and is going to actually make a move on it because they posted their complaints on there. But in reality, if I didn't follow the page or even notice it, nobody at the town would even know what they were complaining about. So I'm just not sure how we handle Facebook pages that look like they're real Town of Lunenburg pages. Is there any way we can address that? Like, I don't know who the administrator is of this page, but they have actually more followers than the Town of Lunenburg Facebook page, by like a significant number, like 8,000.
Yeah.
So that's why it looks like it's the real town page when it's not.
Yeah.
You know, so, I don't know, is there, I don't know who it is.
Yeah, it's the town manager. If the town manager has a response.
I'm familiar with the page that you're speaking on.
Yeah.
I think it's been in existence for a while, so they have a number of followers. I'm not exactly sure who the administrator is.
Yeah, I think it's anonymous.
I think they, if it seems they're reporting themselves as a town official page, then it can be reported through Facebook, but other than that...
I'm familiar with the page too. I don't think they ever purport that it's a town official page. So, I don't know that we have any jurisdiction or any authority to say anything.
I just want people to know that we're not going to do anything about their complaints they posted on.
Yeah, ours is called the Town of Lunenburg.
You know what I mean? We're not, like, we're not going to do anything about the complaints. If you want to complain, then do it through the...
It's an informal poll that that site does every year.
They do it every year, and then people complain about the same thing every year. They did say something, oh, it was the Taj Mahal of buildings. Like, they don't want us to make, to create another building, town building that is a Taj Mahal. And I thought to myself, I don't remember when the last time we've made a town building, and what is, which one is it they refer to as a Taj Mahal?
Yeah, which one is the Taj Mahal? That would be probably the middle.
The one that was advertised, the one that, the one that a certain group of residents advertised against the Taj Mahal was the library.
Really, really?
Yeah, there was actually a posting about that, so this, obviously it's somebody from...
Yeah.
Either with that group or affiliated with that group.
They haven't seen the Taj Mahal.
Which building they were talking about, doesn't look like the Taj Mahal.
It was actually going to be, it was actually touted as the Taj Mahal because the library had the audacity to, you know, to plan a drive-through for seniors to drop off their books or materials in the winter instead of having to get up in the ice and snow, and that was nixed because that was going to be too much.
Bastards. Oh my gosh, okay, well, I'm just, and even just that comment was ridiculous to me, like, because I don't even know what they're referring to. I'm like, what building looks like the Taj Mahal here?
Yeah.
And when was the last time we built a town building?
Well, yeah, the high school was the last one.
Yeah.
Middle school, high school.
And even that's not a Taj Mahal.
I guess it's, I guess it's a, you know, subjective, subjective...
Maybe they've never been in it and don't understand how tight it is already.
Well, like, well, like Mr. Dwyer said, maybe they've never seen the Taj Mahal.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, our high school doesn't even have a Starbucks like New York.
Yeah, really. They don't, they can't even walk to a food source like other towns.
Maybe they meant Trump's Taj Mahal, didn't he have a casino that was?
Oh, maybe, maybe.
Oh, boy.
They might, he might have.
Alright.
I just was, I just wanted to...
Going astray.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out that we're not going to do anything about your complaints on that Facebook page.
No, I think that's a good point, if I could add to that, I think that's a good point because like, people may just think we're being totally unresponsive. If they think that's a real page, and they're dropping all these complaints on it, and nobody's doing, it's just going into a void, essentially, as far as...
Yeah, it's just, that's it.
Yeah.
Maybe we just need to remind people that public comments are at select board meetings, and what time they're at, and they can always...
They can come here and talk about the Taj Mahal.
Well, I will, I will say, I will say, in order to avoid misguided expectations, almost all the town pages are for us to, for the town to distribute information to the residents. It's not meant as a bilateral communication, like, I'm going to have a debate with you. If you want to talk to somebody about some issue in a discussion, then you should call that department or email that department directly. We're not going to do it, and our employees are instructed not to do that.
Right.
We're just here to tell you, hey, this is going to be a road closing, schools close this, and this is what's happening here, just so you know, not to get into, you know, discussions about it.
Yeah. Alright, well, are there any, thank you Heather for bringing that up. I think that's an important distinction to make for the public, that if they see those pages, that Town of Lunenburg on Facebook is official Lunenburg website, it only has about 2,500 followers, and the 10,000 follower Lunenburg, Mass. is private and it's more of a community kind of morale page. Alright, any additional public comments this evening from the Board?
Do you have any thoughts?
Yes, I actually have a public comment. Just for people who've been following the Lunenburg Water District, they're going to have a meeting tomorrow at 4:00 PM, and they're going to address some of the concerns that one of the local organizations, the Hickory Hills Lake Association presented them with a proposal, and they're going to address that proposal now that they've had a chance to review it, and that will be tomorrow. Fortunately, I'll be unable to attend that due to some professional obligations, I believe. I'm not sure if it's on Zoom or not.
Okay. Alright, what time is the meeting at normally?
4:00 PM.
4:00 PM.
Yeah.
Is anyone else able to attend?
If it's on Zoom, I'll try to put it on, but I mean, people are working at that time, so.
It's a hard time to get.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
I had a brief, I was reminded of it by something Heather said. The, a legitimate concern with regard to the trash is some people got confused because I saw it on another Facebook page, and I went and I looked at how it says the trash schedule is listed. People got confused because it says, if the holiday falls on a weekday, the trash will be picked up the next subsequent day. Well, the New Year's federal holiday was Monday, so people are interpreting that. It literally means the holiday on the page, as opposed to, but some people were like, well, the federal holiday is Monday, so they didn't put their trash out.
Yeah, for Christmas too.
Yeah, so.
We were in that, we were in that boat.
Well, I did, I did that too, and I, it wasn't until I talked to, you know, our recycle, our trash and recycling consultant, that I, I found that out, because I didn't put out trash on Monday after Christmas because of that. So, I would recommend that we put the days that they're not picking up. I don't want to know what their holiday policy is, I couldn't care less about their holiday policy, I just want to know, on this day, are they picking up or not? And we should put it either on our calendar, so somebody can look at this exact day, and say, oh, no trash pickup. Like, I don't want to know the reason, I don't need to know the reason, I just need to know whether they're picking up or not. Because I did that same interpretation, I'm like, okay, if the holiday's on this, and it's like, and I'm calculating, I'm like, and I'm second guessing because I don't know. So, I, I'm sure a lot of people fell into that.
They're all making me feel a lot better.
Yeah, that was the same conversation in my house.
Of course, though, I did read...
You're a slut and you don't know when the trash comes.
I did, and some...
Exactly what I felt, is that, you know, as, as a member of the Select Board, I don't know when the trash is being picked up, that's not good.
And, and somebody did clarify that they had actually called Harvey to get that information.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Because they couldn't call anybody at town because we were closed.
I, I do have one...
For the holiday.
One other thing that came to light, came to my attention several times today, and I will just say that I guess people are getting notified or finding out, or however, because I know the preliminary tax bills went out in, in beginning of the fiscal year in July, but I got three separate calls today wanting to know how properties were assessed because they were getting really, really steep, to the tune of like 50, 60% tax bill increases to properties in town. So, I would want to direct them, I, I am aware of it because people are telling me, but these should be directed to the Board of Assessors and the Principal Assessor, who have all the authority and can explain, you know, and you obviously have the ability to abate, to put in a request for abatement from them, but I am under the impression, after talking to some people, that I think properties that are waterfront properties in special got, got reassessed to a degree that seems to me beyond the pale, but again, I'm not an assessor, that is a layperson's assessment, but if, you know, somebody comes one year and then next year they expect a tax increase, and taxes increases we all expect, I don't think anybody expects a 60 to 75% tax increase.
No, no, not at all. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I got my tax bill, and I was actually surprised at how flat it was, because normally it's a couple, you know, it's a notable increase, and this year I thought it was pretty flat, and I was kind of surprised by that.
That's why.
And it's probably because all the homes that are so much more in value, I know a friend of mine sold their house, they bought in Lunenburg for five years on Hickory Hills, and just sold it, doubled their money.
Wow.
In five years, so. I know some of the values have gone through the roof.
Right.
Any other public comments this evening? I just want to offer one public comment, just a recognition that on the state level, that Governor Baker will be ending his service to our, to the Commonwealth, which, you know, I just want to, you know, although this is, I'm sure Governor Baker will not be tuning into this meeting.
Well, as surprise would have it. Special guest on Zoom.
No, but I just, I do want to acknowledge, you know, the government work is, is a lot of work, and especially being governor of the Commonwealth, it's a tremendous responsibility. And I think Governor Baker has done a wonderful job for the Commonwealth over his tenure here, certainly will look forward to what comes next with, with Governor Healy.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I want to echo that, I think he has done, he and Lieutenant Governor Polito have done an excellent job in staying engaged with communities. As a, as a member of this Board, you almost know, you know, that we've, we've gotten lots of communications from them about policies and programs that they're doing. Them leading us through the pandemic was, you know, in a very trying time, they were very communicative and very easy to work with, and I, I think they did, did do an excellent job, and I wish them both the best in their future endeavors.
Alright, any other public comments from you?
No.
Alright, any public comments this evening from the public? Good evening.
Good evening, Happy New Year, guys. David Arnold, 155 Allen Road, where my taxes just went up, just want you to know. I'm here for a couple of things, one is, I just want to be, Heather, I was the one who complained about the Taj Mahal, but it was the pothole in front of it that I was really upset about. I don't know why someone would say there's potholes in this town, because I don't think there's one pothole in Lunenburg, but anyways, I'm here tonight for a couple of things. One is, I want to give recognition to the Police Chief and Fire Chief. They came out Christmas Eve with us, they rang the bell for Savage Anatomy, we gave out hot chocolate, it was very busy, all kinds of kids, marshmallows, I think Walmart was upset because all the kids spilled the hot chocolate in the parking lot, but again, it was very nice to see the Chiefs get involved, and a lot of people went up to them and shook their hands and thanked them for being there, and the kids went up to the Fire Chief, and I thought it was really cool, so, again, if you could pass along our thanks, I did send my letter, but I passed out a warrant. And the other thing I want to talk about is the tax increase. Couple of weeks ago, at the last select meeting, the Mr. Chair made a comment to you guys about, you guys are in discussion, and he made a comment that, you know, you're all politicians, and in fact, I think you said, no, we're not, I don't know if you remember that. And that kind of made me think a little bit, I didn't hire, I didn't elect a politician, I elected a working man to work for us. The tax bills are going up, they're going up, mine went up $8,000, okay? Other people are going up between 60 to 130%. Now, Mr. Jeffries didn't go up, which I don't understand, because there wasn't a house in Lunenburg that went for under $200, $300,000, not one. And that I know, because we do that for a living. So, something is wrong with this whole system, and I urge everybody at home to look at their tax bills tomorrow, and like Mr. Alonso said, you can appeal this, and Mr. Franco, you might know the laws on this, you have until the 1st of February to do it, if you don't do it by then, you can't do it, is that correct?
You're challenging me on the dates at this point, I, it sounds right, but...
Yeah, it's something, that's what the Assessors Office told me to do.
It's not a date, I memorized.
But aren't you a patent attorney anyway?
Yeah, but I was a board of assessor for many years.
Yeah, yeah. I got somewhat familiar with the laws in 11 years on the assessors, but...
I think this brings the, when Mr. Jeffries ran for election, you pledged to help the seniors with the tax credit, in fact, you had a meeting at the Senior Center, and that was three, four, or five years ago, whatever it was. Mr. Franco, you did the same thing?
We're doing that, yep.
I think it's time now to discuss that for real.
We're more than discussing it for real, right now, in real time.
Good, because a lot of people are, I mean, I don't know if you talked to some of the neighbors, but some people are going to have to move, and that's not right at all. So I urge the people at home to take a look at it, call the assessors, and I know, Mr. Alonso, you said it's not you, but you are the faces of Lunenburg, so you are going to get phone calls, and I hope you direct them in the right place, but this isn't, this is very scary times right now for Lunenburg. And I expected maybe a 20% increase, but mine went up, I want to say 72%, which is, is that, have you ever seen anything like that, Mr. Franco?
Yeah, no, I find, it is shocking, I, I'm going to, you know, I'm curious to talk to down, down in the assessors, see what's happening, I'll do that before the end of the week, I just want to see what happened.
I've never seen it that high.
Normally, the calculations are much more carefully modulated, so I have not, never seen an explosion like that.
Well, when you call the assessor, they're going to tell you that rates, the values, the rates went down, is that correct?
The rate went down, yes, yes.
But they said that the property values went up.
Yeah, but the property values went up, not even close in proportion.
No, but on one hand, they're trying to say, no, no, they went down, then the other hand, your property values went up.
And I will say to Mr. McDonald, as I say, I've said almost every year since I've been on the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board now, that the tax rate in the assessment are, you know, those are just parts of the equation, what people should focus on is their tax bill. What your tax bill does, you should expect your tax bill to go up to some degree at some point, sometimes it'll be flat, sometimes you may say, actually, some people see a little decrease, but most of the time it's going to go up. But up is like 5%, maybe some people go to 8 or 10%. If somebody's taxes, and a whole slew of people's taxes, bills are going up 50 to 65, 75%, you know, that is eye-opening.
Oh, well, trust me.
I mean, that's like staggering if you're the homeowner.
Well, I stopped here tonight on my way home, I'm going on a business trip, so I got three phone calls coming here, so it's, it is pretty serious, and I hope you guys won't be politicians, but be citizens of the town and help everybody. Thank you, and again, Happy New Year, and thanks for everything you do.
I want to make a couple of comments. So, you know, there are two things that were said I want to correct. The first is that I noted at the very beginning that my tax bill kind of stayed flat, my taxes went up like everyone else's taxes went up. However, the increase was not significant and notable. Now, last year, my taxes increase was almost $900, and it was more significant and notable, and I had to make a big payment to my escrow account at the end of the year to not get that overall increase in my mortgage payment. But this year, again, I know it's based on where things sell. The second thing is, I don't have a negative connotation associated with the word politician. For me, and my reference to that, I refer to anyone who's in elected office, in my opinion, if you run for public office and you're elected into it, in my view, that's a politician. And that's about as simple as it gets for me. I believe that people who are elected into roles, especially in the town like Lunenburg, and I've made this comment to some residents before, who've made complaints that, you know, certain things are immune from political pressure, such as police reports, such as, you know, employee decisions, that in this role, as elected official, me being a politician, that there are certain things that I cannot do. So I don't have a natural negative connotation with the word, but I did understand at our last meeting when I brought this up, that several of my colleagues do, and that there is a negative, and I, I had no, in fairness, awareness that there was a negative connotation aside from the reality that most government bodies, you know, don't do things effectively. But, as far as the individuals, so, you know, we can agree to disagree perhaps on, on some of those points.
Well, it shows you how wildly different the denotation of the word and the connotation of the word can be, because I, I'm with you, I mean, by definition, almost, by definition, we are politicians, but any elected official is a politician.
Yeah.
But I think that connotatively, that's not a good, doesn't have a good sense to it.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor this too much, but yeah, I mean, you won't find this surprising, but I have, you know, I agree with your definition, and yet, but, but...
And it took till January 3rd.
The first, that sounds like a politician.
No, I'm with you, I'm, I am...
Wait, wait, how many minutes?
I am...
21.
I am personally with you in the sense that, you know, like, politician is somebody who works on policy, like a statistician works on statistics, you know what I mean? But, that's, I was concerned about your use of it in that context, because, you know, perception is reality, like, the average person, the public doesn't see it that way.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, and so, you know, I don't want to wear that baggage necessarily, because I will never, I'll never take a vote that I'll, that I'll, that I'll, I will never let popularity or, or a, you know, the likelihood that, or that somebody is going to make me more or less likely to get elected, I'll never make a decision on that calculus. I'll do what I think is right, if I go down in flames, that's the way it goes, that's democracy, somebody else can do a better job, go for it, that's, I just don't care. I mean, I don't, it's not part of the calculus.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, right, the word politician has smushed into the front of it, but unseen, bad politician, right? So bad politi, they don't acknowledge the fact that there's good politics, that things can get done for the benefit of everyone too, but those get pushed aside, so politics generally gets associated with bad in front of it, for better or worse.
Yeah. Alright, so, we've had a nice, robust public comments section tonight.
Alright, yes.
Any announcements this evening?
None.
Alright, communications from other Boards. I thought I did see something, I'll have to come back to it. Yeah, there was definitely something from another Board.
It's on the agenda, I think, the acceptance of the gift.
Uh, something else, I'll come back to it. Yeah. Alright, interview appointments and resignations, none. Appointments, none. Town Manager Report, they need to step away anyway.
I am shocked that there is a Town Manager Report.
It's very short.
Mainly just announcements of appointments and vacancies.
Yes, pretty much. So just to keep these at the forefront of everyone's mind, of our existing vacancies, there are eight vacancies on the 300th Anniversary Committee, two vacancies on the Council on Aging, one vacancy on the Finance Committee, one associate vacancy for the Green Communities Committee, two vacancies in the Historical Commission, one Member-at-Large vacancy on Open Space Committee, and one associate vacancy on the ZBA. And anyone interested in these positions can find the volunteer forms on the Town Website, on the Select Boards page, and if you're interested and have questions on the roles, contact our office at 978-582-4130, extension 144. For current employment opportunities with the Town, we currently have an Administrative Assistant IT position, a Heavy Equipment Operator position, Facilities Director, Library Assistant, Police Officer, Production Technician for Public Access, Public Safety Front Desk Clerk, Recreation Director, and Public Access Videoographer positions. And information on these job postings can also be found on the Town Website, and our employment, and how to apply for each. Update on the budget process, Departments were sent target budgets for Fiscal 24 the third week of December, and requests are due back next week. I will present the five-year financial forecast and capital plan recommendation the week of January 16th, and the Fiscal 24 preliminary budget will be presented the week of February 13th. The Finance Committee will begin their budget meetings with Departments on February 23rd and end on March 23rd. The Finance Committee Public Hearing will be on March 30th, and this year, the Annual Town Meeting is on Saturday, May 9th. Update on other meetings, events, and announcements, the Lions Club will be holding their annual Christmas tree recycling event on Saturday, January 7th, from 8:00 AM until noon at the Ritter Building, and Lakeview Landscaping will be conducting this event on their behalf, and they will be utilizing a dumpster for the trees.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
My understanding, and I want to be very clear, this is not a complaint, because this is saving me, but I thought that the Annual Town Meeting is the first Saturday of May.
That's correct.
But how come we're having it on the second Saturday? Now, the first Saturday of May, do not change this, is my wife's birthday.
I think we're having it the 6th.
I'm sorry, did I get the date wrong?
Yeah, I saw the notice from the Town Clerk.
6th, you're correct.
Good, alright, good.
My apologies.
Alright.
Saturday, May 6th.
Alright.
Inverse my digits, I guess.
You made me nervous that somebody was going to catch this and change it.
First Saturday in May, yes, that is correct.
Alright.
Another announcement as well is the ZBA will be doing continuation of the public hearing for the Pondview Commons Project on the 11th, which is next Wednesday at 7:00 PM in this meeting room.
Where is the Lions Club collecting trees?
The Ritter Building.
At the Ritter, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So going back to our communications from other Boards, we did receive a communication from Bob Pease, and that was from the Conservation Commission, so I'll just, the summary is that, excuse me, is that they have, I'll just read the emails, it's pretty brief. "I'm pleased to let you know, hi Mike Ray, I'm pleased to let you know that the five encroachments onto the Cowdery land that were identified by the Dillison Roy Survey have been removed by the abutters without having to resort to any legal action. The Commission appreciates the support shown by the Select Board in funding the survey. The Commission will now be requesting that Town Council send encroachment letters to another batch of abutters to the large town forest, Clark's Hill, Laurel Bank, and the Ranol Conservation Areas." And then we also received a follow-up communication that really was to the Town Manager, but looking for funding for, I think this was a driveway cut, but I expect that when the Town Manager has some time to catch up from vacation, that we'll have an update on that. So both of those communications, I believe, were sent to the full Board as well. Alright, so no action of us to take. Going to old business, status, update on Town Manager and Select Board goals. Are you prepared to discuss this tonight, Heather?
I have very few updates, but I can, see what I do have. In December, the Land Use Director and I met with Representatives from Mass Development about different programs at Mass Development, specifically, and they're very familiar with 925 Mass Ave, because that's where I started with, was with Mass Development, on trying to pursue revitalization of that property. And they do have a program that they consist with RFPs for when we're at that stage, so I did voice my, that we would like to utilize that program and their services for that.
Who did you work with?
Shyla.
Shyla Matthews.
Yep. And we had two other attendees.
Okay. Alright. Let's see, for the Select Board, any other updates?
Long-term staffing, that was part of my pre-budget meetings, is discussion of long-term staffing, so that, I'm working on that process of putting that together.
Alright. Alright, so on the Select Board, so are, we have, we have three goals, the first objective is to continue to pursue a project acceptable to the Town regarding the propped-in building at 30 School Street, and on this, we had four different actions. So at this point, we are on, still working through Action, I'd say, 1, which is overseeing the hazardous material abatement and demolition of the old primary school, which should be occurring this spring, and going out to bid on that this month. And then every other action is related to follow-up, seeking public engagement to review landscaping and architect plans, and then I expect that we will substantially complete this before the year is up. Our second objective is to work with the Town Manager and Finance Director to establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption or abatement, and so I'll turn to Mr. Franco and Mr. Alonso for an update on this. And so I'll turn to Mr. Franco and Mr. Alonso for an update on this.
Okay, as Mr. Alonso mentioned last time we discussed this, he and I met offline to discuss sort of what we discussed in the last tax relief group discussion. We're trying to synthesize that using some other towns as models, but incorporating our, some of the calculus that CJ Carroll, our principal assessor, has done in, into this. But at one of the meetings, it was suggested, I believe Mr. Jeffries, that you might have said, no, maybe it was you, Mr. Alonso, that we were going to bring it here first, but I suggest that the order be we bring it instead to the tax relief group first. Let us run it through that mill, refine it more, and then bring it here, a more refined version of what's being drafted right now.
So you guys, so on this objective, we have kind of four different actions. It sounds as if you guys are working.
Finishing number two.
Okay.
And then we will, we will work with number three, with the town manager and the finance director, where we'll actually have models. Our discussions, Mr. Franco's and my discussions, kind of simulated some of what the models would look like, but we don't have the bottom-line numbers, so we don't have a spreadsheet formula to plug in, but we know what targets. So we're putting, you know, we're trying to look at who's eligible, at what time, what does their residency have to be, and then we're trying to look at the, not only the individual that it may apply to, but also the program as a whole, to put a ceiling on how much we're, the town is willing to abate. So we're trying to put all those in place. That will work into the actual models, but we're trying to come up with some of those numbers beforehand. So we're kind of mixing two and three a little bit before it gets to the town manager and the finance director.
Okay. What, on terms of timeline, do you think that we're on track for a May warrant?
Yes.
I, I'd want that to be written in stone. I don't, I don't want that not to happen, under any circumstances.
Well, stone is expensive, so, but it will be.
So that is what we're pushing for.
All right.
So.
Okay, so we're, so then that would mean then that we'd have to have a discussion on this in the next month or so.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And this is assuming nobody causes any problems with it on here, you know?
Well. As we said last meeting, we build consensus, right? All right, our third objective was to review select board bylaws and proposals updates for the 2023 annual meeting. So our first action was to review our policies and procedures, which we have completed. Our second action is to review all select board bylaws, which we'll be doing today, and prepare modifications if necessary, although it doesn't say that, prepare modifications, updates, to improve clarity and consistency with the town charter. So we will be working on that a little bit later today, or at least starting that. And then the third action is holding a public hearing to present any proposed, get feedback from the public, and then preparing the actual article. So we are in process on all of our objectives. Seems as if we are on track to complete them this year, which is all good. All right, any comments from anyone on the board on those? No? All right. So next one, we have an open meeting law in terms of permanent changes. So this, this is a placeholder, I don't realistically expect that we'll have much discussion on this. At our last meeting, we had talked about what kind of changes we'd want to see. This does kind of tie into our request to legislators on, which is really typically fiscal priorities, but also just general requests. We may want to just, it sounded last week as if we may just want to be vague. That seemed to be where we landed, that, hey, we want to keep the opportunity to meet, have open meeting law meetings, but we don't want to be encumbered by requirements to host them. That seemed to be kind of where we all were in agreement without any more specificity to that. So it's really up to us if we want to be more specific than that, and then relay that general message for them to work out.
My, my message was, I am, well, I welcome the use of the new technologies we've been using, but as a may, not as a shall.
Got it.
I can get behind that as well.
Okay. All right. Do you want, to communicate that, or do you want me to communicate that?
I can.
Okay. All right.
Do you want to have a vote on that, just so we can have a five-to-zero vote? We haven't had one of those in a while.
Yeah, hey, let's do it. What's the motion, Lou? What's the motion?
I suggested the idea. Tom, you have a motion?
I have a motion.
I'm not sure how to word this as a motion, but the idea is that we support a policy that allows, I believe, the way Tom characterized it last time was that it's permissive, it allows each board or committee to, to use that technology as they vote for themselves, to use remote and to have hybrid meetings. But we are, we are not, we do not want a requirement that we, that, that, that that has to be enabled. If that can count as a motion, that's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right. I think that's a motion. And there's a motion and a second.
Whatever it was, I seconded it.
All right, are we all?
Lane, poor Lane.
I know. Heather's writing it, though, over here. Any, any additional discussion?
Any minutes, it's just gonna be.
Can you clean that up?
I already did.
She's got to clean all this up.
Any additional discussion? All right, as many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes five to zero.
What? Five to nine?
That was quick. All right, current business, oop, slipping over here. Current business, town manager report on fiscal '24 budget priorities.
Right. So every year, before the, get a jumpstart into the budget, I present my budget priorities. This year, I kind of outlined a little more as far as what's included in the target budget that was sent out to departments. So I'll just read from the memorandum that I submitted to the board. Each year prior to my presentation of the preliminary budget proposal to the town, I review with the board foreseeable budget priorities for the next fiscal year. In line with prior years, there are always more needs than resources, and the fiscal approach is to the, to balance the needs of the schools, town departments, and capital needs while adhering to our financial policies and maintaining strong reserves. To date, departments have been sent target budgets, and I had meetings with various department heads to discuss their needs for the next fiscal year prior to sending out the target budget. After receiving each department's budget request in mid-January, the finance director and I will meet with every department and have more thorough discussions about their budget requests. On the projected revenue side, currently, the target budget includes a 2.5% increase from the prior year's tax levy, an estimated new growth figure of $200,000, the debt exclusion amount for fiscal '24, level funds, state aid, and includes a $50,000 increase to local receipts. By the end of January, we will receive the governor's budget proposal, which will amend our state aid estimate until the state budget is finalized. At this point in the budget process, I foresee staffing needs to be addressed conservatively in fiscal year '24. In prior years, the 10-year staffing plan for the police department and the five-year staffing plan for fire and EMS were part of the preliminary budget presentations. The five-year fire EMS plan was realized this fiscal year, and the fire department obtained their paramedic license on January 2nd, 2023. A new three-year collective bargaining agreement for the police officers went into effect this fiscal year with a market adjustment in year two of the agreement, which is fiscal '24, that may impact our ability to fund an additional officer in fiscal '24. In different departments, there are needs to increase hours for existing positions due to the workloads and changing nature of the positions that will have a nominal impact. Across departments, the challenge that we all face right now is the lack of office space. As we have slowly added positions over the last six years based on need, our space limitations have become more apparent. Given this limitation, needs such as the trash and recycling coordinator and ARPA-related reporting and oversight will be in need that we will need to outsource. Trash and recycling are one of the top resident complaints, as noted tonight, we receive, and the goal of having a coordinator to address these complaints and resolve ongoing pickup issues is important. Once the board approves the pending ARPA funding requests, federal reporting requirements, procurement, and oversight of projects will be added responsibilities that we currently do not have the staff resources for. Outsourcing grant writing services would also be a beneficial need that would have a positive return on investment. Another area I will be recommending resources be allocated is to training for staff. We currently have a very limited budget for staff training and try to utilize all available free training through our insurance company or grants. As we have onboarded various employees, it has become obvious that additional training resources would acclimate employees more quickly to their roles. Operationally, there are several requests I expect to receive, including additional funding for ADA public rights-of-way improvements, hazardous tree removal expenses, drainage improvements across town, cemetery improvements that were below the $20,000 capital project threshold, facilities and grounds expenses, internet costs for fiber at various buildings, IT equipment including camera upgrades and replacement of workstations, constructing a small kennel for vicious dogs behind the public safety building, and library programming expenses. The target budget also includes increases for nondiscretionary expenditures such as health insurance, liability and workers' compensation insurances, debt payments, and our retirement assessment. The renewal rate increase at this point in the budget for health insurance is an 8.5% increase. Liability and workers' compensation are estimated to increase 5%, and our retirement assessment will increase 13% next fiscal year. We will receive the rate range for health insurance at the end of January and our actual renewal rate in March. This is one of our largest unknowns. Fortunately, we've created a health insurance stabilization account that we could tap into to stabilize this cost if required. Lastly, we will be negotiating the clerical union contract this year, and a consultant is currently undertaking a compensation and classification study that will impact all proposed salaries for non-contractual, non-union employees. The impact of both will need to be borne through the fiscal '24 salary reserve appropriation. It is still relatively early in the budget process, and there are many moving parts that will become known later in the fiscal year. As budgets develops, developments come about, and our needs are identified, I'll update the board accordingly.
All right, thank you for that, Heather, and I will turn to the members for any questions from you related to that report.
No. They fall into, I will comment that they fall into line with what I would have expected. I mean, there's some, some particular items in the bulleted list near the end that, that I couldn't have anticipated, but certainly sound reasonable, but everything else, we were, we've been really blessed for many years with low health insurance premiums and, you know, before that period started, there was a period before that health insurance went up eight to 12% every year. So I'm hoping that we're not going to see, hopefully that 8.5 is a good placeholder and it's going to be lower, but increases across the board of everything are going up, so I don't know what to expect.
I think that 8.5% is kind of, is on the high end, will probably, I think, be more mid-range.
The five range?
Yes, but that's.
Right, no, you have, you can't, right, you want to anticipate higher.
Yep. That's what we're told to budget at this point.
I think this preliminary budget report, Heather, is, is very good, so I'll highlight a couple of things. I think it's, I think you always do a really good job with budgeting. I think year over year, the select board consistently provides with feedback that we think this is, you know, one of your stronger suits in terms of being able to manage the town's finances and oversee kind of a good budget process, come up with a good budget that meets the needs of the community. I think that what you're proposing here is a really important kind of refocusing, that at a time where we've gone through this great resignation, there has been just an industry-wide shift to really reevaluating the work environments that staff are in and really putting more resources into keeping your staff in place and, and competent. And so it seems as though what you're doing here in these budget priorities is that you're focusing on the work environment for staff, that you're looking to, to be more equitable with the, we know the process with the, with the clerical union seems to be more, an equitable process to, that's going to probably result in their pay going up. But overall, I think your focus here is really good. I really like the idea about, I, I like that you highlighted the reality that we're running out of space. I like that you focused on what that means in terms of staffing, needing to outsource certain roles. I like that you may note to the importance of the grant writing services, that there's a lot of grants that are out there, but that, you know, looking at the workload, that's on everyone's plates, that there's just, you need the time to be able to grab that money, and that there's just not that time. So I, I think this is an excellent priority, and I do not have any suggested modifications.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments on that? Requests next in our current business, thank you again, Heather. Request to legislators for fiscal priorities for fiscal year '24. So to our newer member, Heather, Selectwoman Soroka, so every year, we go through this process in which we identify kind of, excuse me, some fiscal priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. It's a way for our legislators to help fund some of the things that we're asking for. We don't always get what we ask for, in fact, we hardly do get all that we ask for. But usually, i- it starts with, usually the town manager presents kind of, based on what she's looking at, what she would recommend to the board, and so I know that we're going to look at that here in a moment.
I do not have something prepared tonight for, usually, my list stems from a combination of things, previous year's requests and what's been funded, as well as capital needs, pressing needs. So my list, I thought we would prepare at the next meeting. The thing I wanted to ask the board is this, we have done also in the past, is ask other departments if they have requests, and I do know that the cemetery department, Cemetery Commission, sorry, was looking to submit a request. So I would send out correspondence to other elected bodies as well to see if they had any requests that wanted to be considered by the board.
That sounds good. I apologize for mischaracterizing that, because I said that completely wrong, Heather, about how, because I said it to Lou earlier when we were talking, I told him normally that we kind of give this preliminary, this is what we're thinking, then there's a process, and then you come back to us with kind of a list. So I didn't word that correctly for you, Selectwoman Soroka. All right. So basically, what, what we, what we're going to talk about tonight is, this should be a really quick conversation, but, you know, are there kind of key things that we'd like to see our state legislators focus on with the understanding that we're going to ask department heads, we're going to ask other members of, engaged in town finances for their feedback as well, before we finalize this list?
Well, I will say, for one, having, you know, gone through the capital planning requests, that there were some infrastructure ones that have to do with draining and culverts that would be very advantageous for us to apply for grants and trying to get money toward the Flat Hill drainage problem that we all did the sidewalk for early last, or mid-last year. And then there's one on, what's the, the new one for the culvert?
Page?
Well, there's the page one, but then there's one for another place. I can't remember the name of it, and I don't have the document in front of me. But anyway, there's another one that's on the capital plan, and they would, they would help relieve the capital plan and take some things off it if we can get state funding for. And these all fall within the grants of, you know, infrastructure, and, you know, some of them have to do with stormwater, some of them have to do with, you know, water usage, water conservation, water protection, especially the drainage issues. Those would be mine.
All right, any other ideas?
What about the ADA compliance? Would they focus on those?
ADA compliance?
Yeah.
All right, any other initial thoughts? Facility support. So this is something that I, in my role, say all the time when I interact with anyone from the, from the State House, is that, you know, we have this issue in the Commonwealth where, you know, there's all this funding that's, and there's a lot of money. You know, I work with Mass Development, as you guys know, there's a lot of money that goes to communities that have underserved populations. It makes them eligible for a lot of money that has nothing to do with being, with underserved populations. But we're in the same boat as almost every other town in, in the Commonwealth, where we have aging town buildings, no state funding available to help support us. But then you look next door, and again, no, nothing against next door, we're really happy for them, but you can look next door at Fitchburg, at Leominster, and see the state kicking in, you know, tens of millions of dollars for their building projects that they're eligible for because they have a certain percentage of their population that is below the average income for the state. It puts us, though, in this, in this alpha dynamic where we are, where we are basically a donor community, and, you know, and I, I mean it in a nice way, because I think we're all in this together, we all, we all have to support one another, but the effect is that, you know, we're all paying taxes, and, and when you need the state to kind of kick in, that, you know, I, I feel like we're left behind a lot with a lot of the services. So I say this often, one thing that I, and I'm not going to say I had anything to do with it, but one thing that did change recently was brownfields, which I know I was on my soapbox about that with a couple of different people in state government saying, you know, why does a brownfield redevelopment funds only come if you have, you know, a large population in your community that's underserved, but the brownfield in another community that doesn't have that population is somehow good to go? have that population is somehow good to go? Basically, we have an old dump, there's no funding available for us to rehabilitate that dump, but if that dump were in Fitchburg or Leominster, there's a lot of money available to rehabilitate it. As of about eight weeks ago, the legislation that passed now makes us eligible. So they did get rid of that requirement that says it's only for underserved communities, so that is going to now make us eligible for more funding, but, so I would just continue to, I know this is getting along with it, and I would continue to push them on facility funding for small towns, because I think it's not something that is unique to us, it's really, again, most communities that are in the same boat. How's your town? Do you guys have aging town buildings?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think every town faces a similar problem with at least one of their facilities.
Mr. Chair, you mentioned something about, and used the word underserved, and it triggered something in my head that I would like to add to our legislative request. Many years ago, they had the mass broadband project that brought fiber backbone to underserved communities out in Western Mass, but to get it out there, it passed through places in Central, Central Mass, we being one of them, Lunenburg being one of them. I was the designee, the town designee, I was on all the, all the phone conference meetings about this, this is all the way back in the Deval Patrick days, and it was completed after his, after he was out of office. With that, we're supposed to be on the heels of it, again, the project was slated to help mostly underserved or not served at all broadband communities like out west, especially the Berkshires, but since it passed through here and any other town it passed through, there was the expectation that companies would follow behind there and provide services since it ran through our town. And that's what was promised and has never come to fruition. Now, I was just on a call that I saw come across my email, and I was, I was free during, between the holidays to listen to the kind of a revival of the mass broadband project. And I'd like to go to our relatively new, I mean, Representative Kishmerik and Senator Croner in their second terms, and of course, you know, Margaret Scarsdale is going to start her first term. I'd love to re-energize that and say, you know what, I'd like to see some support for that, because right now, it passes through here and we make no use of that, and like you said about other things, we as part of the Commonwealth help pay for that, and it'd be nice if it passed through here to see if we can get any benefit, if we can get anything to trigger a private company to run an internet service to give us accessibility, because right now broadband, all you have is, you know, either satellite or you have cable, that's it. I mean, very, there's two little portions of the town that have files, and that's it. That's always, always in the southern part of Lancaster Avenue, and I think somewhere in the, in the Whalem district where it just touches on.
Brown Avenue.
Right. Somewhere it touches on another town.
Yeah.
But otherwise, there are no choices unless you go to 5G or something, which is, you know, again, we're not widespread with 5G services here.
Yeah.
So anyway, it'd be nice to try to make use of that and see if we can get some funding to do something with that.
All right. Okay. Any other preliminary thoughts? So we have stormwater, draining culverts, ADA compliance, facility funds, and broadband support. Okay.
Are these, when these are reported back to our legislators, I'm envisioning these are broken out into two different categories. We usually provide a list of what we are requesting for state earmarks, projects, and this would be legislation we would like them to pursue.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, or funding a project, it's not, it's not funding directly to us, but if some of the funding, because this is still funded through, through the state to some degree.
It's the last mile, right?
Right. Well, the last mile is the problem, right?
Right.
All right. Okay. So I know you're not going to communicate those just yet.
No, nope.
So there's going to be more development, development of these ideas, and then we'll try to get them out by the end of the month? All right. Acceptance of gift of new sign at McNally Field. Do you want to present this, Heather, or would you like for me to?
We received a request from the Parks Commission, they voted on acceptance of a signed donation for McNally Fields. The second step of that process is any acceptance of gifts has to be voted on by the board.
Do we have any? I see the email.
Yeah, do we have images? Do we have a description?
Do you have any idea what it looks like? How big is it?
It was, I do not, that wasn't forwarded, that was in.
That's in McNally Park?
The ledger, I think, recently.
Yeah.
It was in the ledger?
But we don't have it tonight. That would have been helpful to have, and I didn't even think about that. We can have that for next week.
Okay.
So we'll have the photos, and I know someone from the Parks Commissioners are, one of the Parks Commissioners are watching us here tonight, so.
While I would be, while I would be happy to vote on it absent that, under the request and the trust of the Parks Commission, I would prefer to see it, just so I know what I'm voting on.
Yeah. All right. Okay.
I don't see any of them on here today.
No, but I mean, we're being broadcast, so I'm sure, yeah. All right. So next, we have our workshop on a bylaw review. So although this is titled a workshop, I'm going to preface this by saying this is probably going to be the quickest workshop we've had thus far.
What does that mean exactly?
It means an hour and a half.
Or what?
Oh, my goodness.
I want to tap out at nine.
All right. So what, so in the Google Drive, there's a couple of, there's a couple of things, and this is, this is really the overview.
Did we get a text? We're getting it now, we'll be getting that picture.
Okay.
I could go in the office and get the paper too, actually.
All right. So there's a, so what we have in our Google Drive is a couple of things, and I just want to kind of walk us through this. So we have a section of the charter that goes into the role of the select board. So just to step back from this a little bit, after the charter review process, there's the usual, every five years, the bylaw review process, and we, and there were changes to the select board section of the charter, and so the purpose of this is to align the charter with our bylaws. Now, the select board also has a lot of policies, so there may not be a need for a lot of revisions here, but the idea is to look at the actual bylaws that we have and then identify if there's a need for any kind of changes.
Well, chapter 305 is remote participation policy.
So.
Okay, so that one, like, I don't know what you want to do with that.
So chapter 74 is the general bylaw for the select board, right? So this is our.
It's the tiniest thing.
Yeah, and it's tiny, but this is kind of our general one that we have.
We need to change all that to say select board.
Correct. Now, certain things, and I don't know if, I know that we, with, with the changes that were made at the town meeting, when do those get updated online? Because I know the state.
I would have to check with the town clerk, she handles that portion, what it goes to general code and when those updates are sent.
Because I think that what Elaine put in the drive here does not reflect the, all the changes that were made at the recent meeting. I'm pretty sure that the bylaw review committee changed selectmen to select.
Yes.
In every instance of it. So it's just the substance of what's here. So tonight, it's really to introduce this to the board and to have this as reference for you. I think that, in my opinion, reading through this, we could very well go with keeping everything the same, you know, it's really going to, I'm not proposing any changes, let me start by that. There's no changes that I'm recommending, however, I think it's important as one of our goals for us to kind of take some time, look through this. So we have this tonight as a workshop, but again, my intent tonight was not really to have the workshop as much as to initiate the discussion.
So, the, chapter 74, that's from our town bylaws? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Yes.
So we define what selectmen do even though they're defined in the charter?
Yep. The charter, the bylaws predates the charter.
Yeah, but you would think that if we did a bylaw review, we would say, hey, look in the charter, like, what our roles are is what it says in the charter. I don't think the bylaws can, I guess they can add things that aren't in the charter as long as they don't conflict, but you can't tell, like, the bylaws booklet, chapter 74 can't tell us what our general duties are because our general duties are assigned in the charter, which supersedes this.
Yep.
Anyway, it's.
So there may be opportunities here to clean this up, we may want to do some deletions. You know, chapter five, administration of government, you know, there's also a couple of things in here that refer to the select board insofar as a police specifically are concerned, with the police department rules and regulations, that we're allowed, and we do, make rules and regulations for them. But, I mean, I think that this is going to take some more time to look through, not just tonight. So again, this is an introduction, I think the town manager may want to take some time to look through this as well, because I think you're going to have some suggested changes.
Yeah, I haven't had an opportunity to, really.
All right. So we're going to continue this conversation at another meeting. I don't know how much more we need to discuss on this tonight.
Yep.
But I think the goal is for all of us to familiarize ourselves with what's here, and then to be prepared at our next workshop to discuss changes. So we'll just communicate that in advance, that way everyone knows, it won't obviously be next week, but that's not necessarily obvious to everyone else. Next week, we are going to be discussing ARPA, so we will not be talking about this next week, but we will get back to this this month, so that way we can close out this goal as soon as possible.
So it'll be probably the third meeting, because Selectman Alonso is not here for the last.
On the 23rd, yeah.
Well, I'm looking at the calendar, I'm actually going to miss two meetings in a row, so.
What?
Is it both in January or January or February?
No, no, the 24th, then we don't have one on the 31st.
Right.
And then the next week, I'm not in town either.
First meeting of February.
First meeting of February.
All right. Okay. When we get to that section, well, I mean, we can take it out of order, do we want to move around February then? Does that make sense for us to then just bump all of our meetings in February back?
To, so that we have one the last week?
Yeah.
Instead of the first week?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or does it make, is it?
It doesn't matter, I'm going to, I'm going to miss one of them because I have two vacations.
Or skip the 24th and do the last Tuesday.
I have, I have another vacation the end of February, beginning of March, so I probably would miss that last one.
Are you out of town the last week of January as well, you said?
Yes.
Okay. So do we want to push back February?
He said he's still going to be out of town.
He's going to be around the first meeting in February, so.
Or the last, so.
He's going to miss it.
If you move it to the last, I'm going to miss it.
Yeah, he's going to miss it. Yeah, he just said that.
I got it.
If we move it, he's going to miss it anyway.
Just went right through my head.
Oh, no, yeah.
Didn't absorb. All right. Not a problem. All right, so we'll keep that, we'll keep our schedule.
If one of these, if one of these is critical, I mean, I'll be on vacation, not skiing, but if, if anything is critical.
Okay, you could.
That I'd be, yeah, I mean, I'd prefer not to.
Yeah.
But if we need to, because of urgency of scheduling, then I'll, especially if we move what I need to be in front of, we put it at the beginning of the meeting, so I don't want to spend the whole meeting.
All right, depending on how our ARPA discussion goes next week.
Sure.
We might need to allocate more time in January to have another conversation on ARPA, so.
I am around, I am around on the 31st, so.
Okay.
So if we want to have the last meeting in January, I can do that.
Okay.
But I don't want the whole board, I mean, I'm just a member of the boards.
Yep. So we'll, we'll keep working the calendar, and then I think next week we'll be in a better spot to take a look at the calendar and see how it affects what's on the calendar because we, you know, we want to make sure we have a full board for, especially for a lot of the critical stuff, ARPA, you know, so, all right.
I think that the picture came through.
You think the picture?
The picture from, yes, the picture's here, yep.
All right.
Maybe we can put it up on the screen.
While Heather is doing that, let's see, the next thing that we have is a vote to open the annual town meeting warrant on January the 10th, 2023, and close the warrant on March the 20th, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. I know the town manager has checked these timelines against the calendar, and they are all make sense, I just want to confirm that.
Yes.
All right. So we are looking for a motion that should read similar to how this is worded.
I move that we vote to open the annual town meeting warrant on January 10th, 2023, and close the warrant on March 20th, 2023, at, March 20th, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. Second.
All right. Any additional discussion on this? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right. The motion passes unanimously, we will open the warrant next Tuesday. All right. And then going back to our request of acceptance of a gift for the new sign at McNally Field, so we now do have the sign posted for all to see on the screen. Are there any questions, comments about the wood sign?
It's a nice-looking sign.
All right. So consistent with the rules, in order for the Parks Commissioners to accept this, the select board also has to accept this as a gift, so the, do we have any specific language you need to go through for this?
No.
Who was the gift from? Do we know?
The McNally family, I believe.
Was it anonymous?
We assume it was the McNally family, but, you know. So the, the motion, I'll make the motion. I move to accept the new sign donated at McNally Field to the Parks Commissioners.
Second. With the side note, as presented on the photo.
Yes.
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 Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, so.
We are astounding Lou with all these unanimous votes, by the way.
All in one.
So we have accepted the gift for the sign. All right. Approval of minutes for December the 13th and the 20th. Elaine made the change as I recommended, so we're good to go for me. Any other, I don't think we were missing any members from either of those meetings? Any discussions, comments, or is there a motion?
I would move that we accept the minutes of December 13th and December 20th, 2022, as submitted.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. Okay. Minutes are approved. Let's go to warrants.
Just to clarify, it's from friends of the McNallys.
Friends of the McNallys. Thank you. All right. Accounts payable warrant in the amount of $1,737,128.07. We have a payroll deductions warrant in the amount of $61,236.91. We have a payroll warrant in the amount of $956,240.90. I will say these payroll warrants are pretty consistent, although sometimes they're a little high. All right. Any action items this evening? Hearing none. I submitted mine to the town manager, but we will discuss them next week. I understand the town manager was on vacation until today, so. Any other action items from any other members of the board?
I will, I will just comment that there's been a back and forth with the town manager and a member of the capital plan, and when we reviewed the capital plan about property lines, and there seems to be a confusion, and probably shouldn't be, about the property lines around the TC Passios building and the ownership, the custody of not just the building, but the property. So at some point, we should probably just try to get it out there about what the property lines are, so people know, because there's, again, there seems to be confusion depending on who you talk to, when you talk to them, and what they're talking about as far as project or something, so.
The whole thing is one line, but what's the confusion?
Well, it's, what was turned over to custody to the Board of Selectmen is what it seems to be in.
TC Passios?
I don't want to say in dispute, yeah.
TC Passios and Brooks and the property.
Wow, I was on the school committee at that time.
Yeah.
Lines.
So.
Okay.
So I think that, to comment on that one, Mr. Alonso, something that the municipal building design committee has raised is the need for there to be an A&R, which is the approval not required, it's to subdivide the property. Because right now, the way it's listed is, we know that the property was previously under the care and custody of the school committee, it was transferred to the, to the select board, there was no official change in lot lines, so it's still all one big parcel. However, when you look at the village district overlay, the village district overlay only[1773.91] However, when you look at the village district overlay, the village district overlay only includes part of the property as being in a village district, which includes TC Passio's, I believe the Brooks house too, um, but the rest of the parcel's not in the overlay. So there is definitely, um, I understand the confusion, the municipal building design committee is hoping to, because it's one of the questions I think that we were trying to wrestle with on that side, which is.
Just bringing the stop bus, you're talking about it. This is the, the two votes from the two thousand sixteen town meeting, and, um, this, it was the map that was on file at the town clerk's office delineating the lines for the two parcels.
So then that's probably what the, we need to propose then as the A&R, um, is based on those lands. Because I, we were having a discussion about, is this a school parcel, is this a municipal parcel? And I think our thoughts were, we settle this question by trying to subdivide the land. And, and if there's opposition to subdividing the land, then we kind of settle this all together.
So this did not create a, this did not, I think officially by deed.
No.
Excuse me?
I turned it, so it would be easier to view.
I don't think that this, this article actually by deed changed it into two lots. It just told us what the board was, was responsible for, and what the plot lot, lot lines would be for what was under the control of the selectmen. So if you look in the registry of deeds, I'm sure it's all one parcel still.
It is, and, um, speaking with town council on this, towns aren't required, if it's a transfer between agencies within a town, you're not required to record it, the registry of deeds.
Right.
Um, although for many people, like you said, his, history gets lost, and especially town meeting votes versus if it were recorded.
Yeah.
At the registry. The, what, the first, um, building design committee, though, did do survey work related, um, to the building, so there was a survey done at that time. So I've corresponded today with, um, our previous architect on that.
Okay.
Can you send this by email to me, please?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because this has come up way too many times, and I just wanna be able to say, here. I wanna talk about it.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I know there's been questions, because in practice.
It's really tight around the.
Based on staffing, the school still maintains support for the property.
There's a gravel parking lot, and then there's, it's tight on that side parking lot, it like misses half of the spots. Do you see how it's so tight there? The little red line?
Yes, I don't, I can't tell you, because I wasn't working for the town at that point, why there was that delineation between, in the parking lot, whether it was to keep, maintain some parking for the school.
I think it was because if we went further, it affected.
The roadway.
The roadway, and also there was eventually some proposed parking that they wanted to keep available in case they needed to for the middle high school.
Right, yeah.
So that's why, that's why that back line was cut so, so tightly.
And they used that gravel lot.
Yep.
The school.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay. Are any other action items? You said this comes up online? You said this comes up online, or you've?
Right, it's come up.
It's come up in, online, like on Zoom meetings, this, these property lines have come up. Every time we talk about, it came up when we talked about the skateboard park, it came up when we talked about some of the things going on, about the things they wanted to do at Passio's, it came up with the capital planning and multiple times. And, you know, one member has one, you know, recollection, another member has another, and they've both been on different boards, and so it was like, there's gotta be, like, this has gotta be a knowable fact.
Yeah.
I'm fine with things being vague, but not when they don't have to be, because if we have a vote, that, that's what the property line is.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we have our warrants, we have our action items, committee reports, I'm assuming no one has any committee reports.
I do have a committee report, because we were diligent at the capital planning committee.
Oh, my.
No, so there was, there, after our final meeting at the capital planning, while there's no requirement that, that all the requests be rated distinctly, like, there can only be one number one and one number two and blah blah, it turned out that we removed from consideration one item, so that caused, that caused a blank area in some people's report, and then some people, uh, they wanted to rework it, but they didn't have enough time on the last meeting, so they moved things around, and it caused duplicates, so there were duplicate item numbers, like ranking, number ten was twice. And when I reviewed it, uh, it was brought to my attention that maybe this is not the clearest way to present this, so I asked the committee to just rank them uniquely, please, and that's what we did. So we remet via Zoom only on Wednesday, and we revoted them and resubmitted, and, and passed a vote to supersede the, the previous final one to the new one, and that is now with the town manager, which you have.
Yes.
Correct, yes, so we did finalize that.
All right.
And our rankings, I think, can be made public if people want online to just show what everybody ranked everything as.
All right. I look like you were about to say something.
Yes, I just wanna, just so it's in the record, the, uh, economic development committee was supposed to meet on December twenty-second, but the meeting was canceled for lack of a quorum.
All right.
And school committee meets tomorrow here, hybrid.
All right.
You can watch it if you want. I won't be kidding.
Here, hybrid, all right.
Yeah.
Hey, I think we, uh, cranked through this pretty quickly tonight, so we have a couple of things for us to do for next time. Um, looking through any other additional legislative request for, um, fiscal priorities. Let me rephrase that, any other request to our legislators for fiscal priorities for, for this coming fiscal year, and then also, uh, taking some time to look through those bylaws, and, um, you know, if any changes are not. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna look to have that conversation on the seventeenth. And as a reminder, I know I sent everyone a text message, um, I think.
About the ARPA.
About ARPA, but if you can take a look at the, uh, the draft ARPA, and then mark it up, I sent it to you in Word and, and, um, and as a PDF, if you want it in pages, I can send it to you that way, too. So if you can just mark it up and try to get it to me, preferably by tomorrow, that'd be ideal. Um, realistically, I will be working on this on Friday and Saturday, so, um, if you, if it's Friday, it's Friday.
You will, you will have it from either tomorrow or, or Thursday.
All right, um, so that'd be great, and then that way we can have a, a continuation of our robust discussion next week. All right. We're looking pretty good, so right now we have our upcoming meeting scheduled, January tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth. Um, we do know that we are trying to get through ARPA, that that is gonna impact us in some kind of way on our calendar, uh, whether it's, um, you know, looking at the thirty-first, or just looking at perhaps one of our other meeting days and just planning a longer workshop time period. Any public comments this evening from the town manager?
None, thank you.
All right, um, any public comments from the public? I like how they went to the screen of the public.
Showing no exact.
Any, um, public comments from the board this evening?
No.
No? All right, hey, another year, you guys, we've all made it, uh, we've, we've all made it. I'm gonna tell you, I told Heather this earlier, I've been having a horrible case on the Mondays, even though it's Tuesday.
Bad day.
All day, it's been all day, so I'll get through it. Um, no, but, you know, wonderful for all of us to be here in this new year. I know that a lot of people make, um, make New Year's resolutions to try to work on, uh, let's all, let's keep working on them, and, uh.
Michael Ray, do you have one for us? Is it to keep the meetings less than three hours?
I was going to comment that, I like the new, the new Michael Ray Jeffries meetings.
Yeah, like, like what time it is right now.
He's willing to do hour and a half meetings, but he wants two a week.
Oh, is that, that's, that's what it is.
No, I don't have any resolutions for us, but I do try to target a two-hour meeting, so.
Okay.
But not today, I think today was.
Today was successful.
Today was a shorter target, so, yeah, all right. We try to talk in advance, we do try, as we look at the calendar, I think there is a thought into how long the meetings will go, and there are shifts that happen to keep the meetings with, but we have been on a longer model, but we are going back to the normal, normal ninety-minute. All right, that's all I have, I don't have any other comments, no one else does either? All right, sounds good, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right, so to all those at home, have a wonderful evening and a happy new year, and we'll see you here, same place, same time, next week. Have a good night.
Take the iPads.